Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Present Counsel Cahill.
Present.
Present Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present Counsel Chakoudas.
Present.
Present Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present Counsel Sear.
Present.
Present Counsel Lapia.
Present.
Present Counsel Lozey.
Present.
Present Counsel Net.
Present.
Present Counsel Trahan.
Present for my last time.
Counsel Walsh.
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
Can we please have a special prayer for Dr. Walter Harrison?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Communications.
We have a couple of appointment letters. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Philip Brooks, 104 Nell's Pond Road, to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a permanent member, replacing Catherine Phelan Brown. Mr. Brooks' appointment is effective immediately and expires on July 9th, 2021. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor. Dear counselors, do you want me to read them all? I'm sorry.
We're gonna read them all first, if that's all right, Counselor.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing the individuals listed below to the Lynn Library Board of Trustees. Their terms are effective immediately and will expire on April 1st, 2019. Andrea Williams, 38 Endicott Street. Linda Valles Bearfield, 666 Walnut Street. Ralph Flohr, 589 Essex Street, number 410. Judith Flanagan, Mayor, City of Lynn. Dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing the individuals listed below to the Lynn Library Board of Trustees. Their terms are effective immediately and will expire on April 1st, 2018. William Conway, 64 Springfield Drive. Judy Weber, 52 Apple Blossom Lane. And Joseph Smart, 62 Millard Ave. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor, City of Lynn. And the last one. Dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing the individuals listed below to the Lynn Library Board of Trustees. Their terms are effective immediately and will expire on April 1st, 2020. Richard Wood, 52 Pendexah Street. Deborah Smith Walsh, 16 Coolidge Road. And Edward Lynch, 33 Atlantic Terrace. Sincerely, Judy Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor, City of Lynn.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table all of them.
Second.
Motion made to table, seconded, non-debatable. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Present.
Present. Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Public hearings continue from December 12th, 2017, a public hearing to make a determination on the percentage of the FY '18 tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property, meaning real estate. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, that part of the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to lowest residential rate.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapia.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
We need an emergency on that?
No.
No? Okay, so we don't need that. Public hearings to be set down.
A petition of Winthrop Property Services, Pedro Maldonado, to permit the alteration of an existing building to allow four residential units and a garage at 426 Boston Street.
So what should the council?
Set it down.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee reports. Utilities Committee. Counselor Capano.
Unanimous as per the committee, motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Host. The ayes have it. New business.
We have no new business.
We have no new business. Well, we kinda do, and we'll...
We have to introduce our friendship, that'll leave him.
Yep, that's what I'm gonna do there, Counselor. Thank you. Two of my best buddies are leaving us. Two guys who I've come to admire, turn to for advice. We've had our differences at times, but we've been able to work things out. When Dan was Council President, he brought this council together, made us all work together. He's gonna go on to bigger and better things. I know the council is gonna miss him. I'm gonna miss him. I know his mother and his dad very well. You should be so proud of your son. He's an extremely great guy, great family guy, his wife and his kids, and I just, I can't say enough good things about him. I'm gonna miss him, Dan. I'm sorry to see you go. Billy, I've known my, pretty much my entire life, I've known his mom and dad, his sisters. We grew up a street apart and then two streets apart, and I was saying to someone earlier that I knew the house that his dad grew up in, and I've been in all three of his homes. And Billy does so much that so many people don't know about. He gives so much, sacrifices his family and everyone that... I mean, I said it before, how much I'm gonna miss him. He's one of my best friends, he always will be, and he's made a promise to me that we can still count on him when we need him. I've been, I can't swear, so I can't say any of the words that I'm used to saying, but it stinks. How's that? To lose both of these guys tonight. We are gaining two great individuals, in Brian and in Rich. They're good guys. I think they're gonna serve the council well, but the experience these two guys have, and I hope you two new guys turn to them for advice. I know I can go on and on and on. Will you guys come up here, please? This is such a small token of our appreciation to Billy and to Dan, and I'm gonna ask Billy first, and then Dan, who's a past Council President, say a few words.
I'd just like to, I can't, like to echo Darren's sentiments. He's just been such a true friend to me, you know, his whole life. The Seers and us, we grew up together. You know, we just never really apart, and we came, you know, our same families, same, we were brought up the same way, through politics and about doing the right thing for people, you know, in this world today. And Darren, you know, his father would be so proud of him, where Darren's standing up here today, and the night that I voted for him for Council President, I actually said that when I spoke that time, I said that was the best vote that I ever made. Voting for Darren Sear for Council President was the best vote that I ever made here in 18 years. It was such a pleasure to do that, because I know how hard-working that he is. He'd be out there in the middle of the night with me, we'd be pumping out basements or moving snow around, just everything. He's always out there. He's a 24-hour counselor. I always strive to try to keep up with him. To all my colleagues, I'd just like to thank all of you. This is actually, I've been here nine terms, seen a lot of counselors come and go. I gotta say, this has been one of my favorites, and I'm not just saying that. This has been a really enjoyable experience. I got a great, another great friend, Jay Walsh, who I wanna thank. His daughter had a recital tonight, and he left the recital to come down and see me, so I just wanted to thank Jay for that. That means a lot to me, Jay. You guys have done, you know, an incredible job. Brian Lapia, I'm so glad. I grew up, you know, as a kid, working on campaigns. Brian was a young kid. I was a few years older than him, but he was a quick learner, and you can see how well we learned the last couple of elections. He topped a ticket. He knows about hard work, how to run a campaign, and how to take care of people. So Brian, it was an honor to, you know, to sit here with you. Pete Capano, you know, Pete's just, he's just the unbelievable ward counselor. His ward, like a good majority of our taxes for this city come from Pete's ward. Pete works his tail off. He has to deal with all the commercial tax base. You know, he brings in a lot of that money. He works hard to bring in business. He's the head of the union. He fights for the unions. He's a great, great guy, and I, you know, wish him well. Hong Net, what can I say about you? You just, every time I see you, you got the happiest face. You always got a happy face and a hug. Nothing better than that, you know? That's why everybody loves you. That's why everybody votes for you, because you care about everybody, and, you know, keep that up. You gotta instill that in all these guys, too. It's a wonderful thing. Counselor Calucci, we go back a long, long time, a long, long time. Rich and I actually had henchkins, you know, back in our twenties, so we've always had that in common, always shared, you know, shared that. If we had a pain or ailments, you know, he'd call me, I'd call him, just to make sure everything was cool. But Rich has been a long counselor. He's the dean of our council. He does a great job. Everybody loves him. Just don't give him your cell number, because he'll call you at 12, 1:00 at night. But when you're sleeping, he's wide awake. So at first, when he used to do it to me at 6:00 in the morning when I was going to work, I'd text him, say, "Rich, what are you doing?", you know, because he sleeps till noon, so. I did that for a while, and then he stopped texting me late at night. But Buzzzy, I sat next to Buzzzy for a few years now. Great guy. Everybody loves him. He's good to everybody. He's real good with the kids, which I love, with the youth groups of all the city. He's a great coach at English. That's why Buzzzy does so well in all the elections. Everybody knows him, everybody loves him. He's always around. You see Buzzzy on Sundays, you see him everywhere. He's always working. He's a 24-hour counselor also. So Buzz, I, you know, wish you luck, keep up the good work. Diana, you've been a wonderful asset to the council. You've, you know, you've done a great job. I know you kinda got, I think you kinda got thrown in and talked into it, and then I think you were nervous at first. You know, we gave you a lot of advice, and you've turned out to be an unbelievable counselor. You've done a real great job. You, like Pete Capano, have the downtown. You get a tough area, constantly busy, there's constantly things going on, but it's positive things. Good things are happening downtown right now. You guys all have a lot to be proud of, a lot to be proud of. We got the market basket, we've got some good, good things going. We've got a lot of new businesses. We got the waterfront. Hopefully, Mr. McGrath will keep that waterfront going, try to get that going down there. I bother him all the time about it. Jay, what can I say about Jay Walsh? I just, he's been plowing snow for me at King's Lynn since he was about, since he could drive, 16-years-old. He was always 30-years-old, even when he was 16. You could always count on Jay. You could leave him there, he'd stay there for three days, and you knew it was getting done, you knew it was getting done right. He's just, you know, he's, he's just a great, great kid, and I really like him. And again, thanks for coming tonight, because I know...
Thanks for being here. We've learned from the best, people like you and other people we look up to. Thank you.
He now, he now took over the parade, the Christmas parade that we all see. It's one of the best Christmas parades in the whole country, barring none. It's the best parade. Does an incredible job. He works on that all year round. That's just not, you know, the week before Christmas. I see him and his father and his whole family, they work all the time at that, all the time. And that's why it's so beautiful and it's so great, and you get tens and tens of thousands of people out there, you know, at it. Counsel Lozey, we go back a long way. You've, you know, you've been a great, great counselor. Ward 1 is the hardest ward to keep happy, I know. I know 2's probably the second one, 1 and 2, but you, you know, you've been here a long time. You do a good job. I see it. This past election, I called Lymphiel Street Lozey Way, because you had a sign on every house. And you know, that's not easy to do. It's not easy to do. You work hard. You get back to all your constituents, and, you know, you've always been an advocate for them, all the youth groups also with you, Babe Ruth and everything, you've been down there with us, and that's why you're still here, so keep up the good work. To Terry, my girl, she does everything for me. I love her so much. You can always count on Terry. She does stuff that I don't even know got done, you know? People come up on the street and thank me, oh, thank me for doing that, thank me for doing that. I didn't even know. I called Terry, and Terry took care of it. I didn't even know about it. She just, you know, she does so much work. Everybody can say that here. She's just been wonderful. Lisa, she does a wonderful job in our office, always been well. Janet, she's been a wonderful addition, city clerk. We had a longtime city clerk. Mary Oddly, she had big shoes to fill, and she's, you know, she's come right in and done a great, great job. Great job, I'm proud of her. And then I got Danny Cahill here behind me, my buddy, old Council President. We had a little battle, and we, I, and he won.
That was your second favorite, though?
But he did, you know, he did a great, you know, he did a great job. He's always good with a laugh. He keeps everybody together. When everybody's hostile and we're kinda getting on each other's nerves, Danny will crack a joke and make it all right, you know, and you kinda forget about it, move on, so. But I'd just like to thank all my constituents, all, everybody at City Hall, Law Department, everybody. I mean, you guys have just been phenomenal. DPW, I mean Charlie G, I was just talking to Charlie Gately tonight, Lindhausen, he's done so much for my ward and for the whole city. Thanked him for all that he's done, everybody. I mean, and I think I said this before, my job, you know, my job's the easy one. I just make the calls. It's the people at City Hall that turn the wheels, that make it all happen, and we all know that. So they make us look good, and they do an incredible job. And I just wanted to thank everybody at City Hall for all these, you know, past 18 years for all they've done. You know, they've done a great job, and that's why the city's coming back. It's why it's where it is today. I was watching Chronicle last night, I'm sure everybody watched it. That was the second time it was on. That's wonderful. There was just a big article in the Globe about Lynn. I mean, it's like nine or 10 in home sales in the Commonwealth. I mean, this city is thriving. It's coming back. You guys need to keep, keep it going. Keep it going. Be aggressive. Keep it going. Bring the businesses in here. The downtown's going like crazy. They built that building, the 49 units, they're already rented out, they're already gone. You know, the guy didn't even finish yet, so that's a good thing. It's positive for Lynn, so. What I would love to see for a Christmas present from you guys is to get the waterfront developed. That would be, that's our next thing that I think that you guys all have to focus on going forward. I would spend next year really working hard at that. That's gonna be an important thing for us. We need those tax dollars. But I don't wanna sit here like your father and tell you what I think you should do, because you guys know what to do. You're doing a good job at it. But I just want to thank everybody for, this has just been an incredible experience of my life, one of the best jobs I ever had. I loved it, and I'm gonna miss it. I'm gonna miss all of you. I've gained a lot of friends in my life, great friends, true friends, friends I'll never forget, that always have my back, and I want you guys to know that I always have your back. If you need something, call me. I'm not going anywhere. You know, really, anything I can do for you, snowing, whatever, a dumpster, anything, anything you guys need, I'll always be there for you. Thank you.
Billy is a true superstar, and when I said earlier that he does a lot of things that a lot of people don't realize, just ask any Little League, any Football Association, any counselors sitting here, any organization, when they need people with trucks, laborers, carpenters, masons, Billy shows up with his guys, and I don't think he's ever charged anybody for the amount of work that he's done. So City of Lynn owes Billy Trahan so much, and I just wanna say, I'm gonna miss you so much up here, Bill. I know we're still gonna be buddies and friends, and I can turn to you, but thank you. And your mom and dad should be extremely proud of this young man. He's a year younger than I am. So, and now on to Dan, who, Council President, I believe four years before I became Council President, and Dan planted a seed, and he's one of the major reasons, as Billy said, that the city is heading into an unbelievable time. He changed, he was so heavily involved in a lot of things that went on, the zoning changes that took place so that we can start building on the Linway. We got the Beacon Chevrolet site coming in. We have other development that's coming in in downtown, as well as the development that's gonna be taking place pretty soon at the gear plant. And I know there are a lot of people who take credit for a lot of different things that go on in the city, politicians and advocates, but Dan played a major role in bringing Market Basket here to the city, and, you know, it's, I'm glad he's sticking around in the sense of being a politician, to be able to bring more to the city, because he's gonna be up at the State House. He's got a good working reputation up there, and I can tell you, he's conquered some things in his personal life that has made me admire him and respect him even more. He is, without a doubt, an extremely, truly amazing person, and I said it to his, I see his mom here, and his dad, Tom, they should be so proud of him for his accomplishments. And again, it's another guy, another person that we're gonna miss on the council, who's contributed in so many ways. Dan, I hope you're not gonna be as long as Billy was, but...
Well, we all know that's not true. This is one page. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Darren Sear, Darren, thank you for your friendship, for your support throughout the years. I am so proud to have voted for you for Council President as well. You've done a tremendous job, Darren. This council is continuing to flourish. The city is moving in a direction with your leadership and with the leadership of the new mayor-elect, Tom McGee. I'm a little jealous that I'm stepping down, because I think you're really gonna spend the next two years of just doing an amazing job of moving the city forward, so for you, thank you very much for your friendship and your guidance as I transition away from the council. And I just, you know, there's two speeches that no one remembers, your first and your last, so I just wanna spend my time, much like Billy, thanking folks. Ten years in the council goes by pretty quickly. We joked earlier, 28 years of experience is going out the window. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it's been a fun time. It's been a great time. Billy and I have had some, some great times and experiences and some long meetings. We've gone to 3:00 AM more than once. I hope that never happens to the new members. I don't advise that you go that late, but let me just spend my time wisely by thanking folks. My mom is in the audience. She couldn't help herself. I told her, "Mom, don't, don't come down." She, she shows up. So my mother, who got me into politics at the age of like eight, I wanna thank you and my father, who would never come here, he's watching at home. He'd be too nervous to be sitting in the audience, so thank you, Mom and Dad. My wife Angela and my son, William, and my daughter Charlotte, who allow me to do this like Billy's families who's here today. They sacrifice just as much as, as the candidates do, not just for late nights, but also campaign seasons, which never end, because every year is a campaign season. So to our families, we wanna thank you so much for allowing us to do this insane job. To the council staff, to Terry, Julia Hogan, who's not here, she had retired, and Lisa Herrera, you've done a fantastic job dealing with our craziness and our constituents calling at all kinds of different times, and dealing with them in such a respectful and humane way. People have real problems sometimes in the city, and the way you make people feel welcome and okay to talk about their issues, it makes our jobs just a lot easier, and it makes it more gratifying. So thank you so much, the staff, who do a fantastic job. This place wouldn't run without clerks. Mary Oddly is a, is a very special person in my life. She, she kinda brought me up in the ways, you know, when I showed up here eight years ago, as a young, well, there's a lot of adjectives you could use, but I was young, gur. And, and Mary was, was very helpful and very kind, as she is to all of us, and I know she's enjoying retirement. I love people who enjoy retirement. It's the worst when somebody retires and they don't enjoy it, so I'm very happy for her, and I know she's very happy for Billy and I today. And Janet, you've done a fantastic job. You really have. This is not easy, as you know. Rich Calucci calls all of us 15 times a day. If you think I'm joking, I'm not. This is very serious. I have no idea what you're, thank God you have unlimited data, but, but the clerk's office is, it's a unique department here in the city. It really doesn't make much sense, sometimes, the amount of things that you're tasked to do with the staff that you have, who do a fantastic job, and then you come up here and have to keep all this, all these motions that we sometimes second, and then second and second, and then amend, and second, second, and amend. I'm confused. I can't imagine how confused you are, but you've done a fantastic job, and we wanna thank you for all the, the great work you've done. Department heads that I call, that we all call constantly, who respond to us, who are dealing with constituent issues, thank you very, very much for all you do. Please continue to take my calls. To the Law Department, who we work very close with, Jim, Rick, George, and Mike Bowery, who's, Mike's over there, as he always is, always to the outside of the view of the camera. Mike is always ever watching us. Thank you very much for all your hard work, and again, we come with you, we come to you with impossible problems, and you find the solutions, and it's always for the best outcome for the city. And I'm, I'm still gonna continue to work with you as we move forward. I joked, I'm gonna be the number-one legislator who has the most bills passed, probably because of all the home rule petitions that are becoming our way out of this council with this new mayor, which I'm excited about. My stats will go up. To the police, to the fire, to our teachers, to our city employees, thank you very much. Again, the city wouldn't function without your support. To the citizens of Lynn, and I will be continuing to represent about 42,000 of you as a state representative, but for the other 50,000, I wanna just thank you for giving me the opportunity of a lifetime, being a city councilor at large, representing 92,000 people. To put that in perspective, I serve in the legislature with people who represent 40,000 to 45,000 people with staff. Now, we do that double with no staff. By I mean no staff, I mean aides. Well, I guess that's why you are so busy, Terry and Janet, but we thank, we thank the residents for, for sticking with us. We do controversial things sometimes up here, and the residents of Lynn are very understanding once they are, once, once we speak to them, once they get down to the issue and understand what we understand, they realize that we're folks in the neighborhood, too, and we all have the best interest of the city at heart. Billy did a great job of thanking all the counselors. I wanna thank you again. Wayne Lozey, I will never, ever answer your calls in February, when there's a historic snowfall.
That was good.
Yeah, it was great. Yeah, snowed again in 2015. Hey, Dan, take my calls. No problem, Wayne. No problem, Wayne. Never again, Wayne, never.
Being for that.
Yeah, thanks a lot. I'm scarred for life for that. Call your ward counselor. Jay, you've been great coming on, man. You came on like gangbusters, you've been a fantastic addition. You're really bright, astute, hardworking. You do things that, you're hands-on. I probably shouldn't say the things that you do, because some of the things you do probably may break a couple of rules, but it's all for the best interest of the residents. And what I hear from Ward Seven is that you've just done a tremendous job, and you're somebody that they count on tremendously.
Thank you, Dan.
Diana, you add flavor and pizzazz to this council. Thank you. It's not easy being the only female counselor on a body of 11 members, but you do a tremendous job. You work tirelessly for your constituents. You've been a very dear friend of mine. I appreciate all the support you've given me and my family, and you're just one of the hardest-working people I know. So, thank you very much for your support, and I look forward to us communicating in the future, because I represent half of your ward, still. I'll come back to you, Buzz. Rich? Exactly. You're the man. You can call me anytime.
Thank you.
All right? You're my friend.
Just not 12.
Just not, yeah, you can text.
Church on Sunday.
Church on Sunday, folks. Got to go to church on Sundays. And you got to, well, thank you, Rich, though. You've been a good friend, you've been a long supporter, too, and I appreciate it. But I represent half your ward, too, so I'm not going anywhere with you, right?
I know where you work.
You know where I work.
You live.
You know where I live. I know, you have my cellphone number. Brian, it's been a pleasure working with you as well. You are one of the hardest campaigners I think I've ever met. Your first-time win was amazing, one for the history books. And you have lived up to the hype, and you, you work very hard for your, for your constituents. And as somebody who, who represents your district as well, I feel very good and very safe and very happy that you're in that seat, fighting for Linners every day. And Hong, you're my man. Suck say bye.
Suck say bye, my man.
Hong, you've been a friend from, from the word go. You've been great. I remember him in the parade, in the Memorial Day Parade, there's a little, I'm going to call you a little guy, because I'm big. A little guy comes by with American flag, waving it, going crazy. Who is this guy? I'm running for city council. I said, "You're going to win, I like you. You're a good man." He's smiling, loving it all, he loves America. It was like, it was, it was perfect. Hong, you sum up this country perfectly. Hard-working, great guy, great family, loves what he does, loves people, loves the city, loves this country. If we had more Hong nuts in the world, you know, I think we, we just, it would just be a better place. So, thank you for your friendship, very much.
Thank you so much for your friendship, too. Thank you.
Well, it's going to continue. Peter, you're the man. Peter, you know, people don't, people don't realize how really good Peter is as a ward counselor, and he has his, he has his impact citywide, but he's fantastic. And I have had many conversations with you, many allowed discussions, and they've all ended positively, and they've all ended for the best interest of the city. I think you've just done a tremendous, and I've done, I've done the things to you that you didn't like, and I apologize for you, for that, and I did them, I had to do them too. That's a dog memory. And I'm sorry, but I love you anyways, and I love our time outside the Union Hall when I can pop by and say, "Hey." And I'll miss you, but, you know, who, who knows? You know, crazy things have happened. Billy, my ward counselor, thank you. You really do do a lot for your constituents. Things that people have no idea how they get done, when they get done, who did them. Billy doesn't want credit. Billy installs things in people. I think he's crazy, I love him. But, you know, I'd call him up and say, "Oh, this person in Ward Two has a problem, their water meter is, you know, busted, we got to call water and sewer." All of a sudden, like an hour later, the constituent calls, "Bill Trahat's at my door, he's going to install one." I said, "Install one?" He's like, "Yeah, he's here in my basement installing." And then I say, "Oh, Bill, you got a job out of it." He goes, "Oh, I can't charge anybody for that." So, that's the type of guy Billy is. He, he just does things, and he out of the goodness of his heart. I don't know how you make any money. I mean, I feel like you give everything away for free. I shouldn't probably have told everybody that, because now you'll get, you'll get even more calls. Call Rick, stop it. Sorry, Rick. Hope you know how to install water meters, Rick. Yep. Something tells me you don't. He'll be buffing out, you know, "Somebody hit my car." Don't worry, I'll be right down. He laughs now, but he'll be doing it. Yep, Rick's auto body. And Darren, again, thank you so much for your friendship. Ward Three, I remember the old battles. Remember the great old battles when you, when you ran against Charlie O'Brien? That was, God rest his soul. That was, that was like one of those, I was a young guy running the school committee, and I, man, Holy Family Church, when it was at a polling place, the place was wild. People everywhere, you know, and you could feel the thickness in the air, and anything was going to light that crowd on fire. But at the end, you and Charlie became close friends, and, and Ward Three really prospered as a result of it. Ward Three has a, has a history of really great ward counselors, and you're a continuation of that. And my buddy, Buzzzy. Buzzzy, Buzzzy, Buzzzy became one of my best friends, not just in the chamber, but outside the chamber. Buzzzy, you are a great man. You are a great friend to a lot of people, and you do a tremendous job for the City of Lynn. Another person who doesn't take credit for things, just goes about his business quietly, helping out kids, a lot of kids. You really do help out a lot of kids, but just anyone who, who needs help, Buzzzy Barton is there to support them. And he's a dear friend, he's a fantastic counselor. The voters got it right putting him back in. And you should be able to be there for as long as you want, because I think any constituent understands the value of having Buzzzy Barton here on the city council. So, as a, and personally, of course, my wife loves you, and my kids love you, and my parents love you. I got to watch out for you, actually. I just want to say thank you very much for all you've done for me. So, thank you. I think I've run out of thank yous, my note here is done. Former councilors, Duffy, geez, I served with Duffy, Mackin, Ricky Ford, Paul Crowley, Brendan Crichton. I got to thank Tim Phelan, who was council president for a long time under, under, when I've been here. Loretta Cuff O'Donnell for leaving when she left, because had she not left, I wouldn't have run for that seat, so I want to thank her very much. And don't worry, folks, this is the last of my long, long speeches here at this podium, but you can't miss me if I won't leave. I'm not really going too far, just sent me going down the hallway. It's been an honor to be a counselor-at-large, it's been an honor to serve with you and many others, it's been an honor to serve the City of Lynn, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
And they kick us out.
Please, Darren.
(inaudible)
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 Buddy the Elf.
My side gig.
(applause)
Well, I don't know how you did it, Dan, but you took two more minutes than Billy, so he's going to get the chance to rebut, if he wants.
Pass on the way.
I just want to say to everybody that's here tonight and to everybody out there that these two councilors are two of the best that I've got to serve with and got to know. And I mean, that doesn't take anything away from anybody who's here, but Billy and Dan are really, truly dedicated servants of the public. Thank you, guys. (applause) Let's do this at a council.
President, first of all, I'm going to, for all of us, we love Billy, we love Dan.
Thanks, brother.
I want you to know that. Merry Christmas to all. Or motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, we also got to say Happy Hanukkah.
Oh, yes.